First matter of business should be our old, uh, previous planning board meeting minutes. Do we have any?
Do not have any.
We do not have any, which we'll put that on for the next meeting. Looking to review. Uh, onward agenda item for this evening is the Town of Bethany Fire Hall and the question about a new sign. Would you like to kick us off, Tom?
Yeah, uh, basically, uh, what happened was the fire department approached me, uh, quite a while ago, uh, on replacing the sign that is out there in Cortica signs, you know, uh, but they were gonna change it, uh, but she told me what she changed it, it didn't allow it, it doesn't fit our, our, uh, sign law, sign law says. Uh, it's on here, see, I'm sorry, I don't have my mic, copy, really, but basically it says that a sign should be steadily with, not moving, that they want to put up a sign, uh, which are pictured up in your packet, um, that is changeable, and you know, I don't say, uh, you know, the fire department, you know, happily, happy marriage to go to New York and stuff like that. Um, I've worked with a number of these and it's pretty much down across the state, they've said, you know, that, yeah, almost everybody zoning does it, they consider that a moving sign, that's good, it changes, you know, so, um, I had, I told them at that time to apply, I denied the permit, which gave them right to area variance. Uh, always some discussion, use variance or area variance, but we pretty much in the state, everybody's gone to treat it with an area variance, because it makes it possible. A use variance would take it out, and really, we're not saying that you can't have a sign, it's just not as tight, our zoning laws are low. So, with that being said, they provided the information with me, uh, many, many years ago, and I wouldn't even begin to venture an idea, when that sign was placed, it was off, it was accidentally placed on Patrick Reynolds' house. Uh, Patrick Reynolds signed off on it with an easement covenant, right away, whatever you want to call it, and so that issue became out of the way. So, I watched one of those things, uh, the cha- because it's a changeable sign in that, that was, that was one, uh, I talked with our town attorney, uh, to get a ruling on what I thought, it's, it says it, non-compliant signs, which that is now, if it's a non-compliant, that would be an error, that it shall not be altered unless it brings an inconformity. Well, they don't bring it totally in conformity, but it brings it smaller, it brings it down, it reduces the amount of non-conformity, so I, I'm good with that, that, I gave that to them. Um, fire department signs are non-commercial signs, they're, you get a, you know, so, they fall into a little different category, so really, the only issue is these LED signs. Now, I also work at the Village of Warsaw, we've had a couple of them, uh, come up there, one from the hospital, and right now, we're doing one for the, uh, Warsaw Fire Department. And what we're doing, uh, because nobody really has any rules on these things yet, they kind of come up with it, so, I went around, like, I told everybody to think of in Wyoming County, I talked to Wyoming County, their guy, they said, nobody's doing it, they're just doing it on variance. I checked the Genesee County, I found one place that's got it, uh, it's the Town of Katia. And what they did is kind of a guideline, they say that they limit a change to once every 10 seconds, so it isn't like bang, dang, different things, you know, like that, once every 10 seconds, because these signs are minutely controllable, you can control the message, the color of the message, how long it stays up, how it comes in, everything like that. They picked 10 seconds, I, I don't know the rationale behind 10 seconds, I think it was to cause less of a distraction while you're driving, so you're not trying to read, you know, five, six things and that stuff, because we have people who are so distracted now, I mean, they're running into things, you know. The other thing too was, they made it dimmable, they required you to dim it at night. Now, there's kind of discretion, everything, it's like, what is noise, what is too bright, what isn't. Nobody could come up with a, we always used to refer to signs with lumens, now they call it nit, N-I-T, uh, I'm not familiar with exactly, like, a nit's like the same size as a lumen, pretty close. They just came up and said that it shall be dimmed, uh, to, uh, a non-arguable point or somewhere, you know, where people in the community don't have a problem at night, because, you know, you can have it bright in the day, you got bright ambient light, and then at night, it dims down, because if you had it that bright, you know, you get white up, white up everything. So, uh, I've been involved with several of them, and that seemed to be what they do. The other thing that they don't like on the signs, and, uh, we also put that against, uh, put it in with, uh, Wyoming County Hospital and the fire department, we don't want scrolling, flashing, uh, you know, where, where the thing is going across like a banner and you're reading it, where it's got like fireworks blowing up. Now, can you put a stationary firework behind it? Yeah, put a star behind it, yeah, stuff like that, but they're just saying they don't want these flashing, bang, you know, and all that, and that, and, and that's what the Town of Katia didn't, uh, doesn't want to have, and Warsaw, they just saw it anyway, and it's pretty much my conversation with Wyoming County, and almost everyone they've done, they implemented the same thing, you know, because it's kind of distracting, you know, a lot of it's in the neighborhoods, uh, where you got houses around. So, that's, uh, what my suggestion is. Um, picking a light, amount of light, you know, i- it's hard, because you have bright night, dark night, and that, uh, some of the signs got, measure ambient light, and adjust the sign by the ambient light around, you know, if it's darker night, they get darker, if it's, you know, lighter, it's light, it changes, and the signs are amazing what they'll do, you know. Um, it is important on here, because we're right in the middle of a neighborhood, if you go to your last four or five pages, uh, on there, there's color photos of, I stood where the sign was and took pictures, or houses, kind of like doing the 360, and there's going to be eight of these within 150 foot, I would say, that maybe 200 foot, that are going to be where the light will get to them, you know, uh, so we want to, you know, I would think, uh, if it was dimmed to a non objectionable thing, you know, I mean, I think the fire department is a good neighbor, it's a community service, that they would work with, I think a number, if we try to pick a number, it's gonna be a hard thing to check, you know, in, you know, in different times, different days. Um, with that too, the only other thing that, uh, we asked is, because these are like community signs, is that in the event of some sort of emergency, uh, Georgia Warsaw had water, made a break, so they were going to a water boil advisory, the hospital volunteered to put up, it wasn't operation, but they said, there was at the time, they would have put up the boil water thing, you know, and things like that, you know, uh, you know, and they can, you know, put, and the hospital puts up baby meetings and stuff. Uh, one thing that prohibited by the state and prohibited by everybody is, you can't have what they call no off-premise signs. So, the fire department could put on, well, here, you know, like a planning board meeting Thursday night, uh, you know, welcome these people, welcome, uh, clot club that works here, has a meeting here like that, but they can't say, welcome to Steve's, uh, big cattle shop on 123 Jericho Road, you know, we can't, they can't go do that, you know? Yes, yes. Don't worry, we're coming that way.
It's the talent city.
Yeah, so they, so they do that. Now, the hospital in Warsaw, uh, they advertised the pipe fair that they had boofed in the pipe fair, that, that would be acceptable, I think, you know, because they're still advertising that organization with that. And that's kind of it, in a nutshell. And you guys are making a recommendation too, again, with modification, whatever, to the ZVA, what's he gonna hear? Uh, let's see, planning board hears it next week, and the ZVA is gonna hear it, point fifth, is that what it is? Yeah. So, Mr. Wawak is here from the fire department, and I'm here to answer questions.
So, you're saying that sign up there is non-compliant?
Right, because with it, with it now, you're only supposed to have six square feet, it's 49 square feet, you know, uh, it could have been, but I believe it was a pre-existing non, a pre-existing non-compliant sign, I mean, it predates our zone, you know, so, you know, now it's six square foot, you know, which is, if I remember on your drawing, I drew it was, uh, 47 or 49 square foot, and the new sign will reduce it three or four square foot. Big number, but we're, we're going the right way, and that's the wrong way, you know?
We're not increasing, we're decreasing the octagon.
Right. Um, yeah, kind of it.
Before we ask questions, fire department, you want to say anything, or Tom, what you need to do?
Well, what I, what Tom was saying, uh, I don't know if the signs are just a book of brightness or not, I can't, I don't know, I don't know, as far as community news emergencies, I can't see that being an issue. I could see them advertising a blood drive, whatever. No, I can't see that being an issue.
Sometimes we have the food bank up here, you know?
Yeah, I can't, I can't see any of that really being an issue.
And I know the sign is dimmable, I picked up one down seeing, uh, Steve Fairbanks from TBS signs, or, yeah, yeah, TBS signs, or, yeah, TBS sign, whatever it is, now, he says, yeah, it's dimmable, it's, it's, it is, uh, very nice sign, what's good to do?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either, but, but he showed me the thing, and it's a good quality sign, very nice. I do it, yes, right.
Um, yeah, I read this very carefully. Uh, one, I have a few things, not too long. Uh, under flashing oscillating, are not permitted, that's what you have highlighted in yellow, and then the next clause is, unless necessary for public safety or welfare. Now, who determines that? Is that the fire chief? Is, you are a member of the fire department, maybe you've got a different opinion as, as the fire chief, as to whether the flashing thing is, uh, necessary for public safety?
Well, I, I would think if there was an emergency in the town, a snow emergency, maybe in the future, a boil water advisory, should we get water up here, uh, I could see that being considered an emergency, uh, I don't know, kind of, you know, what's the definition of emergency?
Well, that's my personal, because you do the maximum you can for a public safety.
Right, that's my personal thing.
Okay, um, I have a little comment about signage size, I think there's a, a dearth of, uh, or at least in precision, in defining the size of the sign, for example, this, this picture here, the numbers that you're coding time, as to the size are the size of the whole thing, including the frame.
No.
No?
When I get my math, what I use, Rick, I use...
You use this here?
I, no, I use this here area, uh, no, wait, deal with a second, I use just this area, this is Pepsi, Town of Bethany, and then this area here, this, uh, where you hang a lot.
Oh, you mean where you can put stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I use that.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to...
Yep, well, that's a good question, I probably didn't make that clear enough on here.
If you, well, no, it's okay, uh, if you painted a 10 by 10 sign on the side of a 80 by 60 foot barn, you know, the barn is supporting the sign, because you can't paint thin air, but natural science, you see what I'm getting at?
Yep.
Okay, well, last one, please, is, um, you had this correspondent, Dave DiMaggio, and you said, and, uh, Major, I don't know if this is, that, uh, here it is here, this is you, your email to Dave DiMaggio, Tom, look at this. I am of the opinion, is it, my opinion is this proposed sign meets the intent of all these zoning laws, and the second variance is not required either on, and then you mentioned commerces, please advise, and Dave DiMaggio, it says here, got back to you by phone, you say, uh, verbal response, okay, as per Dave on 8/21/19. What's okay? Is it okay to, uh...
Mr. DiMaggio...
...be second various, is it okay to approve this area variance?
No, he wouldn't make a comment on whether it's okay to approve the area, my question to him was, my opinion of that, if, if, you know, reduce to non-conformity, an issue, and he said, yes, yes, I agree with you, you're not, you're not off-base with it. I, the way I work, like, we're doing with Mr. DiMaggio, we don't use his opinion, because you shouldn't really use his opinion, I'm the code guy, I suppose, make an opinion, and then you go to interpretation or thing. With that, uh, I put that one out today, told him, like, I've, I've got a report, and then they come back and said, no, the flaw in your thinking is this, you know, and that stuff, but he said, no, I agree with you, you know, I don't, ain't bringing it 100% conformity, but you're bringing it in, you're going the right way.
Okay, so, so we need to act on this, and having said, I would like to move that we approve this area variance?
Well, you don't approve it.
I mean, recommend approval to the panel.
I'd just like to wait, to get more questions out before we get to that.
Well, I, I'm making the motion, and now it's open for discussion of my motion.
Okay. I, I can go with that, just to make sure we're not giving...
Pay attention, Tom.
Yes, sir. All right, this guy just got to deal with this, though, because I can't deal with it anymore, and I would ask him to put a couple stipulations.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would ask that, I think them are appropriate, they seem to be following the trend, and I would, so, okay, after that, the other motion, the 10 second, the, uh, dimmable to an acceptable level, and whatever, uh, that it also be, uh, no flashing, scrolling, animation, and, uh, I, oh, there was another clue, it was a spotlight, oh, that it be used to advertise emergency messages, and that's just my suggestion to the board, that four items.
Acceptable brightness, how are you gonna define that?
Yeah, you know, I, I guess if nobody calls in and do, we're gonna have to kind of hope that everybody, we're gonna, you know, it could, because that is a tough question, isn't it?
It is, right.
Could be put down 57 nits, well, first of all, I don't want 57 nits.
What's that? That's...
I also don't know what 57 nit means to the guy next door.
Right.
Or lady, you know, terminology, but is it coming in a bedroom window, and we can't sleep at night because 57 nits are bright, we don't know?
So, I guess we have to deal with that as they come in, I hope we can maybe leave, broker with the fire department and say, hey, you know, I mean, because like, the signs can sit the same way, so faces are gonna be, uh, yeah, so, most of them, one's gonna shine over toward this apartment complex over here, but there's a good row of trees, that mainly blocked by trees, that's kind of, this side on rounds and that, it's farther ahead, most of the houses are back, and we picked up a few trees.
I never see it, but...
Now, the end, which I would worry about shining on, well, the old four houses and the ones across there, there's no light on the end, the end is...
Coming out towards the left.
Yeah, it's coming out this way, and then houses are this way, so it shouldn't be, uh, I wouldn't be as worried about, because I don't think it's gonna project out, and the other thing too is, LED lights have more of a tendency to light here and not shine out, you know, I mean, that's a, you know, that's not a great terminology, a great thing, you know, and the other thing too, I believe, one of the reasons they got this light, just with the LEDs and that stuff, is it, it tries to follow the night light law, the night light code law, whatever, and that, that's why you see streetlights now, remember before, they used to light up everything, the house, and everything, now, they shine straight out. The hotels going up in Warsaw, I'm working with my hotel, they got lighting in their parking lot, but it shines straight out, and then it confuses off the ground, and everything on the building shines down the side of the building, you know, so, you know, the New York State's saying, you know, we can't have, well, I think, well, US is saying, we can't just have big quartz and light shining up everything, you know, showing up night light in the city. I think this would, oh, hell, I mean, uh, you know, I don't know.
I think the fire department would be willing to work with the community, I mean, try it, dim it, if they get complaints, it's too bright, we dim it a little bit more until, I mean, like, after nine o'clock at night, until six in the morning, who's driving by that really needs to see it, in reality, you know, it could be a Friday night, but during the day is when people want to see it coming to and from work, so it's gotta be dimmed, enough neighbors complaining, again, I think the fire department's willing to work with, I don't see that being an issue.
But I would necessarily put it into this, I assume the fire department initially would make rounds locally, and hey, would put the new sign in, how is this working? Rather than wait for the complaint to come, again, I'd rather not put it into the language of what they're doing, but you guys are proactive.
And everybody's starting to get notified, a public hearing here, you know, I mean, um, it's, it's, uh, you know, I mean, I didn't know from being in the City of Katia, they had one, one of them, they put it in, and the church put up, it was in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and they, it got it, it turned down, you know, and it was, they did put it, and the church did, church is compliant now, it's fine, they might, you know, maybe they, midnight or 11 o'clock, shut it off till six in the morning, or, or something, I don't know, but, uh, I, I don't know. I don't want something biased, because I am a lifetime member of the fire department, but I've always seen them being good neighbors, being a good system, and they are part of it, you know, and that, um, you just don't know, now, I got no, like, uh, the taco restaurant in Warsaw, uh, there was some controversy over that one years ago, and it got to be brought up, when the new owner took it over, so, even now, that, this came up because of the hospital thing, at night, he shuts it off, he's cold for business, he doesn't need to go in out there, we don't need to distract, he shuts it down outside, you know, uh, I don't think, you know, I would like to put in hours of shutting it down, but I think, if, if it was his thing, I, I think the fire department's got a good enough character to do this response, you know, I really, I really think they do.
Do we know how many messages that board can carry at a time, like, rough, is it, we put up two messages a scroll, is it one message that we run?
I think you can pretty much...
Put a hundred of them up there?
Where's the, uh...
Bring 90 of them.
There was the original, the, the original packet, I just brought a letter in from the sign company, I mean, I'm looking at the very...
Nope.
Well, there's one thing here too, it says it's got 140 degree viewing angle, so it will have a taper to it, you know, so, that'll help people across the street too. Um, making this door sway, right here, yeah. Uh, it says, dimming, dimming level, 100, auto or manual, so we should be able to come up with something with this. Uh, you guys don't have this paperwork, I just got it the other day when I got back.
No.
Create software, five year, whatever, or something like that, uh, no, it doesn't say, I, it doesn't, everything that I can see, I think, I think you can probably set up as many as you want, and have it feed through, you know, I mean, like, uh, they got Tom and Deb's wedding, you know, you might want to just leave that one up, or leave the plane, or one up, or something, you know, and, or you might have a change every time, and you, and if one was only once every 10 seconds, I guess it probably doesn't matter if it's, you know, I think, I'm sitting at the hospital, probably got 20 or 30, you know, that, doing, you know, baby this, baby that, baby this, uh, doctor so-and-so, and this and that, I think you probably set up as many, that you probably got rams to set up, I believe, and that stuff, um...
And I only raised the question out of curiosity, would we want to limit it to a couple messages at a time? I don't, I, I'm asking the question...
It's not, it's not bad, I mean, you know, I mean...
I could see somebody sitting there for hours, waiting on the messages.
Wait, wait, because, why it might be, because, you know, the other thing too is, well, let's see, I have to do the math to figure out how many time, how many sign changes you would see going through that, I did that at Warsaw, the hospital...
People to slow down, basically, everything.
You know, when I, like, I know when, uh, I think, I think when I did Warsaw's there, if I come back on 19, if you see the speed one, I think I got five or six, five or six from the time you could see it, and it, six, eight, 10 seconds, whatever, so, you know, um, good and hard, I mean...
Excuse me, someone said that, um, there's only one in Genesee County, Stafford, some staff has had it for two years.
Right, no.
You know Jamie Call?
Yeah.
If you call him, he has control of it.
I already called him Jamie at Warsaw.
Yeah, so, so you hear that he had it?
Yeah.
Did you say only one person, or one, one...
No, one town had zoning laws, specifically, uh, Stafford had to go through with a variance rule.
They did, and they have many?
Yeah, oh, there's a lot of them, there's one, Dyckfarts got one, there's one on Lockington Street by the church, Town of Katia's got a...
But this is the fire department, that's the fire department.
Yeah, uh, but I meant when I said one, was that one town had got these specifically written in, that has to change their, uh...
So, you've got ID on him?
Yeah, that was Town of Katia, there you go, 10 seconds, no flashing, no animation, dimmable, and that stuff.
And who controls it, where is it controlled, where is the control apparatus?
Uh, control apparatus, depending on the manufacturer of the sign, could be just iPhone in the pocket, could be a computer set up at the, uh, office over there, uh, they have, oh, depends on how much money you want to spend, you know, some of them, you gotta go on physically plug your laptop into and download it, and some of them, you can do remotely from outside, you know...
This one includes a laptop, computer, software program that allows the user to create and schedule content on their display, all part of the thing, so the fire department, whoever's, whoever's in charge of that computer...
More than likely, it will be locked in the chief's office.
We all have all kinds of things, I think. We can't judge the content, however.
And we're taking it away to the bank.
You're taking fun out of it. And more than likely, this laptop...
That's right, the chief, and it is at their house, I think it's at their house, his wife is the chief.
Right, he's the chief at this time, yeah.
So, they have total control.
At this time, at this time, I'm sure, um, it'll end up in the chief's office, where it's locked, underlocked, and key, where only a few people have access to it. Not saying it may not change in the future, but this time, that's where, that's where it probably is.
I doubt you're gonna find somebody who wants to bother to run, do it. Everybody's waiting over, trying to hold that, you got to do them good, though. Do one, here we go.
Keep it locked up in the room.
Yes, keep it locked up, I mean, the retention, you know, good to see a few people out there.
Two young guys coming in.
Yeah, and what can you do, it's a nationwide problem, no doubt.
We need some, we need some more undergrad, that's all guys are getting.
Yeah.
Anybody else on the board got questions? We'll drop to...
Is any neighbor here to speak?
Well, they don't, uh, they don't get notified until the public hearing.
Okay, I just, uh, maybe somebody's...
But, yeah, nobody has a door going or come in, was there, uh, but there, we, uh, notice it should be going out, the 25th, I think it's 10 days before they gotta go out, I remember right.
Does this list, the list that's on the back, all those people?
Uh, yes, yeah, uh, yeah, that was, yeah, it's a, in the residential, in the, our neighborhood, we use 200 foot, and what I use for 200 foot is, I took the Reynolds property, because that's the property hang on, and then I do a 200 foot buffer, the whole, the whole thing, and if it's close, I'm not sure they're gonna put it there, yeah.
Where's the electric coming from, the Reynolds?
What's that?
Where's the electric coming?
Uh, right, yeah.
I don't, we saw it in the driveway.
Well, you know, when, when Vicky first came to me, I was trying to find the pins, sort of, that figured out thing, and the driveway, for whatever reason, over the years, it's got shifted, it's got shifted over that way, I, I don't know why, but it does, and, you know, back then, who knew who lived there, maybe they guessed it.
I don't remember who lived there.
Someone calls, so it didn't matter what you did, because I'm part of the fire department.
I see Sammy, I thought I seen Sammy the other day, but she's still alive? Okay, I did see her at Katia, well, now, is that still alive? You know, I was thinking one was gone. Maybe not, I can answer three times or a question.
Just trying to think how we want to manage this, Ray's, uh, motion. Do we want to just add to it, or let Ray add to it?
Uh, I covered it pretty well, I think, uh, because you can, somebody dropped something, you can program these things, not only the light intensity day versus night, but the content and all of that stuff, and, uh, I, I know I'm very familiar with the one in Stafford, fire department, has all kinds of things going across it and everything. But in this case, we want to keep it to, for emergency stuff like that, which is fine.
Well, no, no, we're not, we're not saying just for emergencies, it's still gonna, it's still gonna be, uh, you know, Jeff and Vicky's anniversary, you know, you know, congratulation anniversary, I mean, and then we just were talking more of a static sign, but it would just change the whole sign and not have animation to the sign, I guess, if I think, yeah.
So from your original motion, I would like to see added some discussion about dimmability. We have that feature in the sign, so I'd like to make that.
Yeah.
The emergency messages, that the fire hall would carry emergency messages, I assume they're going to anyways, but just make sure our paperwork is someplace to cover that. Do we want to go ten seconds, do we want to go longer? Does anyone have an opinion?
I'm not the expert on that, I don't know, I think they're kind of pulling it out of.
You know, I'm trying to think, you got a pretty good side view coming up there, you know, I don't know if you want to go much over ten seconds, because it isn't gonna be all that long, you know, I mean, on this side, yes, this side, no. I don't know, uh, you can put ten, ten out, try to do a.
Is it a one-line text that we're seeing, or is it multi-line?
Multi-line, or has the capability of being multi-line, and it can have pictures on it, and it can have all that stuff, whatever you basically program it to.
And one at the Methodist church, you have, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
At the red light.
Right at the red light.
Yeah.
And that exchange.
Yes.
You could pass by it if you go much longer than ten seconds, it's a thirty mile an hour zone, and thirty miles an hour is forty-four feet per second, ten seconds is four hundred and forty feet. After a while, you, you're past the sign, you can go to thirty.
Right.
So what does, what good does it do to have it be longer than ten or twenty seconds?
Unless you again, just want to throw it out, or what our timeframe, we want to put to it, but again, we don't want to just.
What I'll do is do before, uh, before the ZVA meeting to help you guys with that, I'll go down, I'll drive my car and see, god, see when I first start seeing it, and see how many seconds I can see it down. It's gonna hurt me to do it.
That's what I'm saying.
I'll come back the other way. I just can't drive fifty-five. I know, but I can do that, I'll, I'll be willing to then supply that information to the ZVA instantly, I'll have that for their, mine, I'm just, you know.
So since we are just making the recommendation, the ZVA is gonna make the final determination, I wouldn't mind seeing our, the quote of ten second recommendation pending opinion, the ZVA's further discussion. That way, we at least kind of have a timeframe of thinking, give them some idea.
Yeah, you know what your wishes were.
That we're thinking timeframe.
Yeah, yeah.
If we just leave it open to no time put in there, then it's, they've got to do all the thinking, so we can do some with it.
Yeah, because, yeah, the truth, yeah, the, anyway, the event's kind of getting on to ten seconds, they see the sign, if we put it for five seconds, the second goes, go flash on, and they're gonna be like. And they, you know, yeah, now they're waiting for it, or something, I think it'd be more of a distraction, you know, I, I, I don't know, you know, I might even be able to get Dan Lang a call, he's zoning in after the town of Tegu, asking, how did you pick this number?
And then the ZVA may have a different opinion, longer, shorter.
Yeah, yeah, your guy did recommendation, I don't care if they just recommend, but.
We're helping frame their discussion.
Yeah.
So I'd like to get it framed as clearly as we can, so that they can.
Ten seconds of line?
I'd say ten seconds.
Seconds per message.
Okay.
Yeah, because terminal, yeah, yeah, differently detailed.
Ten seconds is a long time, if you're looking at it.
And I'd like to see no animation personally on that as well, which kind of plays into that ten second rule, don't want fireworks for the whole ten seconds.
You mean moving?
Yeah, maybe.
You can have a picture.
Oh, yeah, but not, you know, you don't want letters zooming across, fireworks and everything going on.
Some sort of flag.
Certainly a bunch of that type of stuff, not, uh, if you want a flag, it's just stagnant.
It can't blow in the wind.
Yeah, because the one at the Methodist church does have pictures, but now I'm thinking they don't move.
Yeah, most, that seemed to be the big trend, is to get away from that, from that movement, you know, on road signs, you know, I mean.
It's wonderful that they can do that technology-wise, but to have that on that particular, in our signs, the sign, I talked internally and other people I've bumped into since I've gotten this, and there is a little bit of concern that we're stepping rustic is kind of humorous on that sign, but the sign is rustic and fits with the local feel. This new sign puts us into another technical age, but, you know, we're not that, again, Addis, because doing it at other staffers, you know, so, okay.
They're coming out more and more, I just.
But don't want the distraction on our road sign that's interactive.
Yeah, I, again, I digress, but I remember I went to Houston, so my dad came here from seventy, forty, seventy, plus, like, Houston was just exploring, and they get head over, going Texas, we're not, we're not going. We were trying to drive down the street, they knew just had flashes, twirls, I mean, it was kind of deep, but mommy wasn't helping my driving, you know, you know, and it was good, like, it's like Vegas, you know.
So now, if this does, so does the next person that wants one, they have a variance now?
Yeah, we're not changing our zoning law, so it would have to be dealt with on, on variance.
On case-by-case basis.
Like if Bill wanted to put one up down around sixty-three, if Bill wanted to put one up down in sixty-four.
Right, they would have to come, because we're not changing our zoning.
Isn't the guy next door, doesn't he have a sign one? Someone, the lift guy, isn't there one there?
There's a thermometer.
Oh, and he has a thermometer, yeah.
Oh, wow.
I mean, it switches to the clock.
Yeah.
Gives the time.
Yeah, because I think our things, obviously, your sign can, they'll not move, except they can't have time and temperature and, uh.
Can you see it in your house? Your own?
Yeah, I'm, I'm backer, down here, how, how.
I can see the red light though, the blinking red light, we don't tell them what to do, they got the, they got around their stop signs too, they got the.
You can see that, though.
We could see the, yeah, I know, in the winter, when the leaves are, you could see it from the.
Okay.
All right, anybody have anything else they'd like to see in?
The other thing you suggested was limited to two messages at a time.
Do we want to do anything with the number of messages, or let them do what they?
Yeah, I think we've given them a lot of rules, let's see what they do.
Anybody else?
We're trusting the good neighbor, the community, uh, like the.
How far can we place this?
I can see that stretch, so the number of messages, again, just thrown out there for discussion purposes, I think we have four items.
Yep.
To read those back, if we've got nothing else to add.
Motion to vote on, dimmability, emergency messages, ten seconds pending ZVA, ten seconds, I should say, ten seconds per message pending ZVA, further discussion, no animation.
And that's to raise motion to approve or recommend acceptance of the sign. Do we have second on that?
I'll second you, which is.
Who was first? Tim?
Who's on first?
Are you, Tom?
Tim, Tim does the heavy lifting around here.
Kennedy, Boss?
Yes.
Cipriano?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Jacket?
Yeah.
Wells?
Yes.
Soworka, yes.
Recommendation carries, and on to, who gets it next? Except the town board or?
Uh, the planning board, or the county planning board and the ZVA. Well, I think, I think the county planning board, uh, you know, I don't think they have a big issue, because I haven't heard from Lee Pay, usually if there's big issues or something you want to talk about, usually he'll, he'll call and say, you know, what's going on with this, and then get a little bit in, but, but I haven't heard words from Lee Pay, so I'm, I'm thinking. I wouldn't be a bit surprised, they, they put, they had to okay town of Tegu zoning law changes, so they're probably, I'm thinking they probably take it kind of along the same line, I would guess, you know.
All right, I think next order of business, like to just brush on this evening, is the zoning law changes that we've been discussing over the last several months. Um, Debbie has provided me with a PDF version of our document, and now have it into an editable format, Word, just still have some tweaking to do to get that complete, so that I can make the changes without the thing bugging out. Um, just because there's some page breaks in it, so the minute you start adding text, it all sort of jumps to another page. So working on the draft form of that, so that everyone, like we discussed at the last meeting, we will add in, in the relevant places, items such as referencing the New York State Building Code, the current, and we'll declare it as the current building code, so that keeps us current with any changes to the code, reference elements of, uh, high hazard, anything that's governed under chapter, current chapter four, I won't reference chapter four, because New York State may change that. I doubt it, because IDC is very regimented, but we'll reference that hazard class of the building code, so that anything of the higher hazards becomes special use permit, which, again, it dumps it right back in our lap, as we discussed, so that, uh, it folds in to paperwork Ray had put together in the thoughts, being less specific line item, but it still encompasses all the elements that you were concerned about. The, uh, explosive, flame ball, uh, it, I don't know, this, uh, high hazard, Tom, you might know better, it doesn't necessarily talk nuclear type of.
No, nuclear, I think it's totally, uh, don't you even mention it.
That's a federal, that's a federal, but New York State's don't. But generally, we're sweeping in what your intent was.
The nuclear stuff, uh, it's true that if it's the federal government, you know, that list of prior things that I had, and one of them was nuclear, because we would really want a nuclear storage facility next to the houses, right? So it's true, it's true, if the federal government, but the federal government sometimes contracts with private companies to do their dirty work. For example, Bactal and Blackwater have a long history in Iraq, if you watch the international news, so it's not enough to say, we don't have to worry about it because it's federal.
Yeah, I hadn't dismissed it, it's undo, by discussing it, by saying it's not in the building code, it starts to put it on the radar, should we be talking directly, we want to understand how we fold that in, I don't want to lose it. What you, I want to, at the end of the day, make sure that all the elements you have referenced are somehow swept into that language of the room.
Yeah, excellent, that's what I'm hoping for, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, and just so you know that New York State is gonna pick up most of those, but I don't think New York State will do the nuclear, and I don't know if it'll do hazardous type of waste.
Well, right now, I got one I'm working on in another township, uh, with chemicals, a complaint was called into the EPA, but the EPA, they're gonna come out here, they think they turn it over to New York State, BEC, BEC's still giving them an hazmat, I mean. So even though with EPA, it's still BEC is guys with boots on the ground, you know, they're that guy, so, well, you know, you might run into nuclear, uh, Ray, uh, you know, we're starting to see, and I don't imagine it in codes much, where we're starting to see these, uh, medical shops pop up in us, in a plaza now, you know, you can go in and get something, but they'll use certain, uh, low way, yeah, low way, you know.
Yeah.
Low emission radiation, I guess, for black, a better term, but you know, and that's where we're running into the big engine, uh, oxygen concentrators now, and that, uh, because they're popping up in these little places in, in neighborhoods now, you know, and, and that stuff, so. I would keep, you know, saying that, yeah, you could use them, or, or whatever agency is deemed appropriate, you know, I mean, you know, but it's good to keep it in there.
Before we go to final draft, what I would like to do is take your sheet again, we will read what we intend to do, and then as a group, we will ask the question, does this encompass this element? And we should be able to say yes to each one, if we don't, we can fold more language in to cover that, even if we have to use that as specific. Again, I, I don't want to write out anything, but also want to be vague, or vague isn't necessarily the right word, I want to be more encompassing of the elements, which is why I want to reference the state building code and the hazards, that probably sweeps up four or five of the seven, and then there's one or two that we're gonna have to probably roll up our sleeves, do a little more work.
Well, these, uh, just to step backward, we went back at this sign, five years ago, nobody was doing these signs, they were cost prohibitive, you're.
Things are changing.
Stadium were doing them, but I think, it's, I mean, it is like that, I mean, the way you can refer back, because time's moving faster and faster, you know.
Which is one of those other things, I don't, because you've been here and not throughout the summer, this discussion about solar farms and the solar panel farms, we want it to fold in as part of our language updates, we're gonna do it, we might as well get everything that we can think of folded into this.
And as long as they're under that number kilowatts, we can.
Right, again, put it into what we can, there's gonna be a point where the state's gonna step in and overrule us, but.
Take that, take that.
Yes.
You, you.
But again, we want to make sure we're hovering the topic, right?
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Britannic, some of you may know me, I, I've been a resident homeowner and lived it for twenty-five years, but I was here a couple of months ago and first started addressing the issue with the solar, industrial solar projects. And you may remember, Dick, the man who kind of shut me down, said, don't worry about it, that's way down the road, that's, you know, it's kind of coming out, but I knew it was gonna, I guess way down the road it is now, so. Well, my question is. To what degree are you, are you actually writing language to limit size and testing?
I'd like to have control over what happens, whether that's limiting, we're still working on the, just because the topic has come up in the county, and we're seeing large solar activity, that we want to get a handle on it. We're working on zoning code to deal with some high hazard discussion that came up with some rezoning, so there's a lot of moving parts, while we're doing this, rather than do it multiple times, let's try and do it once, the solar discussion came up, so now it's, let's get where we can control that as a board, to the maximum extent that we can, because as we have talked in various meetings, we may not as a town want a mega solar farm, it impacts the visual aesthetics of the town, which was part of the discussion, when the windmill discussion came up years ago. People did not want the aesthetic, uh, limitations that a windmill would, quotes, so.
Issues as well for not only us, but wildlife issues too.
Right, and there, there's definitely concerns about large solar complex.
And it's also too bold, because not only are they just dealing with aesthetics, but there's a lot of issues with them as well, but also, uh, as you say, state being involved, I certainly, what they're really pushing, and this is kind of a back door coming in, if they can control your decision-making, you're also, they're also working on taking away home rule on anything. So that's one thing to keep in mind, you know, by giving that much, you're opening yourself up for every issue that concerns us effectively, to take that home rule decision out of your hands.
Right.
To keep in mind too. Keep in mind too, because if you give this much, you're also getting, you know, setting precedents for future.
We don't want to micromanage as a group, but we sure want to be able to control things when it needs controlling.
Right.
So, if we have no language, we're behind the times.
Have you had any formal applications or anybody inquiring or?
None. Again, it came up because the topic came up in other parts of the county, and the fact that we're in this activity of adding language to the code, it seems prudent at this time to start, because they're becoming more and more prevalent. Everywhere you go, you're seeing more new solar activity.
Unfortunately, it's money grab, and very few benefit from it. And as Dave DiMario was saying, well, what do we do then? And I said this, because I was part of the, when they tried coming with Industrial Winter, I was part of the committee there too, relative decision making. My suggestion was, why don't they subsidize the homeowner? Can you imagine just small, a small panel, one small panel, every roof, subsidize for every home? You couldn't even compare it to Winterbine, what they're doing, energy, I mean, percentage wise, you make more debt and usage, and take less stress off of coal, and whatever other source you use than anything. But they're not going to do that because you're creating independence, but, you know, and once again, they're keeping their thumb on the control.
Well, there, there's still subsidies for private ones.
No, but I'm saying, if they're going to do that, it should be a blanket thing. For America, that could be often as, if you put a panel on your roof, you will get tax subsidies, and if you have a certain sized one, you can actually have extra usage of power that returns to the grid, same as what they're, they're doing. But they don't want to approach a subject, because like I said, there's huge corporations, money grabber politicians, their financial interest, it's the same on story, and so here we are again, you know, and it's going to be shoved down our throats, and that's, you're right, it's where it's headed, ultimately state will have decisions, but now's the time to take a stand and have support, so we don't lose home rule on any decision making. Like you say, you're discussing nuclear facilities right now, they're dismantling West Valley, look what they did that keep it down there, it's terrible. It's in, it's in the cataracts, it's everywhere. So, just proof for thought, you know, you gotta keep me two steps ahead of us, what's going down here.
So, I do want to get back to this other thing that we were discussing, because as you probably remember, I own property.
Let me.
But I'd like to just say something about what Chris is talking about.
Okay. Yep.
So, usually, you said that you didn't have any applications.
Not for the topic we're discussing.
Right, but usually, in every town, the application is made to the code officer.
Right.
And the code officer, has he had any application?
I have got phone call, I've got phone call, as you said, was one from, I don't remember what, it says, do you have solar, solar energy law? I said, no, they said, okay, um, if you want to remember, I have one farmer asked me, I have one farmer asked me on his assessment.
No, I'm asking if a company called you or approached you with a letter?
No.
Okay, well, that's the way it happens, and then, I don't know if you know this, but I'm sure you do, that you have 60 days to set your, you have to have something in motion where you are actually having a moratorium or making the law, so that they can't say that they can commit.
Well, I don't know.
And I think you can refine that in other ways, but that is, that is the way it basically goes.
Well.
And so, knowing what is coming, and knowing what's around, you probably ought to be talking about either a moratorium, or a study committee, or something, so everybody in the town knows what's going on, and is involved in it. Because how it's done, all over the county, all over the state, is that these guys come in the back door, they've already gone to the farmers and had them signed, then they come in the back door, and then the 60 day thing takes over, and you can, you can figure out, I, I know something about this, and then, and then if there's a moratorium, they can't do anything more until you've made your decision in your town, which is a very important thing, because you need to be in control of it. And you probably also know that if it's more than 25 megawatts, it's a very cumbersome thing in the state.
Yeah, that's fair.
Pardon?
I said, yeah, um, but our zoning also is clear that what is not, what is not allowed by zoning is inherently prohibited by zoning.
I am.
So, if we have known nothing in solar, where we allow it, then in hand, we do not allow.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
And from the board's perspective, because we've discussed it from the high hazard discussion that we have here, we are aware that if it became active, where someone was to come to the zoning officer and look for ultimately putting something into town with a high hazard, we'd immediately go through a moratorium. It has been a topic that's been discussed.
Very reassuring.
We want the control, but we don't, if we don't have to go through that extra motion, we won't, but we are also, we absolutely want control.
Vigilance, excuse me, you're being vigilant, I hear it.
Yeah, we're, we're on it and keeping track of it, and these are things, that's why we're discussing it again.
You, you probably know that Russia and California have 3,800 acres going in together.
We're in 31.
You know it's vibrant.
31 is great.
You know they're probably.
Two smaller one.
So, it's, it's there.
It's there in this county.
Even under permitted use, as you said, Tom, if it's not permitted, so forth, one of the problems is that our current zoning law, as Tim pointed out, that tries to address this under industrial District One permitted uses. For example, item five, great indoor trucking terminal. Well, the proposed propane thing was going to be a trucking terminal, I mean, what are you trucking? Are you trucking boxes of cornflakes, or containers of plutonium? See, it makes a difference, it's not specific enough, and that's the reason that I made my motion.
You can't specifically have anything, you have a 5,000 item, I mean, there's, there's a million different truck.
Right.
That is why they have it, and they got to come to the board.
Tom used the right word, things that are dangerous, explosives, like you brought up dynamite one time, and propane is 106, a dynamite is a gallon of propane, so, so if the wording encompasses that, which Tom is trying to do, right, you're trying to get.
We're trying to encompass as much of what we intend, we will do the same with the solar, we will encompass what we're, the intent is.
Okay.
Again, to make, we're, you're never 100% bulletproof, but we want to be, we want to be able to control the decisions as a town, have the town weigh in as a group, as opposed to just being railroaded, and that's, again, that's how we discuss.
You can't see the figures, just right now, methane, diodes, there's a fire, creating generators to run on the farm. Now, there's six of them in the state, they're either in operation or becoming part of operation, to where they are compressing the methane gas, and thing, and trucking it off the farm, and selling it as a product.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's changed, they, they realize it was a better market than just trying to fuel their own farm with it. Now, some counties have said, wait a minute, you, you are not ag now, but there's some saying, yes, you are ag, because you are presenting that on the farm, and saying, I mean, but, you know, there's, there's still a lot of bill and code, a lot of issues, and, you know, transportation thing, but, you know.
We, we actually covered it with explosives, so we're, by doing this broader sweep, helps, helps catch these, because who knows what the next thing comes.
Can I ask a question about explosives? Does this mean highly explosive? Because, of course, that's why I'm here tonight.
It means anything high hazard, explosives is one in the.
That you must get a special permit for, so you are going to be open to allowing a gas terminal in the town over by my property and a church and a little hamlet.
Not necessarily, because we're not.
Not necessarily.
Again, the thing is, it's, it's not in front of us, it's hard, like Tom says too, it's hard to see the future of what's being discussed, and I can't think of an appropriate example to give to you of what we would allow versus what we wouldn't, because it's not in front of us.
Well, I'll help you think about it by giving you the example, would you allow, under a special permit, a gas terminal next to that piece of property, across from the cement and across from
Without a size attached to it, I couldn't answer that, because I could see a small, again, it, it's not necessarily practical from a business standpoint, but somebody with a thousand gallon propane tank versus somebody with four or five 10,000 gallon, it's a completely different scale of what you're talking about, and not knowing that.
Well, it could be like Barrett's gun supply, they got a gun shop, they got a 15, I think, 500 gallon propane tank out back, if you want to fill a 20 pound bottle for your, for your thing, uh, Country Max.
Right.
BJ.
BJ.
BJ is tricky.
You know, and again, like explosive, you could say, okay, we don't want explosive, well, it's fireworks, they're coming around now, you know, and the county, and, and it's really, it's a weird written law, but actually, they're permitted unless the town says they're not permitted, you know, it used to be, it had, you had, the town had to vote to allow, now the town has to vote to disallow it, and that stuff, uh, you know.
Could I get, help you to clarify?
So, I guess the example.
Size is an issue.
The example I would use then, is like Tom mentioned, I don't know if you're familiar with Country Max, they've just put in that propane filling tank, maybe 500, 1,000 gallons.
We're not talking.
But that would be covered under my high hazard building code.
Do we know if that man went away, because.
I have had, no.
I want to tell you something that I did personally, I went to three of his facilities. They are not in a hamlet, really, they are much larger than, I mean, what Country Max, that's nothing. This guy has lots of those huge tanks, I have no idea what size they are, silos, purple, many, many trucks that you would have propane delivered in your, in your, and I have pictures. I would be happy to show them to you, because I think you need to specify whether it's, or is it a Country Max kind of thing?
But that's.
Would that, would they come to?
That's the point, I guess, I'm getting at, is both of them, let's say both of them walked in and had a project in front of us, we would have to weigh each one, I can't only, again, till I've seen it and I understand it, I can't answer the question till I've seen it. I'm not leaning towards accepting that one, but I, we would be more willing to accept the Country Max size, because that's what we're, again, that's what we're looking for, scale and scope towards, but it's, again, they have got to come for that same special use permit as the one with the, but the different levels of scrutiny because of the danger of what, the guy with the smaller Country Max size tank is going to get a pass a lot sooner than somebody with this massive scale. Again, I'm not saying, both of them are getting a pass, I'm not saying anybody's getting a pass.
I know you're being politically very correct, and I know you're very.
But you know what I'm getting at.
Yes, I do.
I can put a thousand gallon tank in my house.
Please, please, first, what? Okay, so what, what I'm trying to tell you is.
Yeah.
I think, even though we're trying to be legal, et cetera, here, we all know that for a couple of years, somebody has been looking at that property over there, and we all know, I particularly don't want that next to my property, and so I've taken rides, I went on the internet and I found out, he has five different places in Western New York, and I went to three of them, my husband went with me for, and so, I have pictures, et cetera, this is not comparable in any way to.
Yeah, but we can't say that, because he never gave us, he never presented us a plan on his side, it could have been where he was going to have a yard and drive a truck in and drive down the truck out. We got no information from that gentleman at all.
We've had nothing new.
We had nothing, no app, we had no thing, the land is being sold as we speak, so he's out of the picture.
If it, if he came in tomorrow, I'd be surprised, again, we've heard nothing since the first time the gentleman discussed the topic. So, we're not here entertaining it, but we are seeing holes in the zoning that we want to tighten up, we want to control those types of uses, and again, have a bigger say, and right now, they could both come in front of us, and they would comply with the holes in the code, the zoning code. We want to close those holes, and use the New York State Building Code and other language that we're going to fold in, to say, all right, any of you with a high hazard, big or small, regardless of your scale, have to sit here and do a special use permit. As that permit process goes through, there's going to be hearings, there's going to be discussions, you're going to be able to sit here and say, okay, I've gone to this guy's facilities, here's what we're seeing. Again, it's going to be that discussion, and we're going to, as a group, make that discussion, make the decision after multiple public hearings.
Okay, very good, and I would like, just to say that I can't imagine a high hazard, something near that hamlet like that, and I, I hope that you all see that that is a very, very bad idea.
That has been discussed on the board.
But it's important to remember that when it comes to hazardous, particularly explosives, what counts is not only what the explosive is, and how much of the explosive there is, but the environment in which this facility is to take place. Thompson and Leroy, Reisdorf and Batavia, Country Max, these are all low speed, low traffic zones. What's unique about Bassini, and why I went on the warpath, is that you've got high speed truck traffic coming through there, and they ain't going 35 miles an hour, they're going 65 or 7, they're all trying to avoid the through way joints. That's what makes it hazardous, so, well, you said, maybe, uh, Mr. Campbell, he's the CEO of Home Ten Energy, realizes this and has dropped it, I don't know.
Until.
I have no contact with that.
Yeah, until he shows up and brings something in front of us, I can't really answer that.
I had a conversation with every answer, when we were doing the meeting, before we were into that meeting, it was, kind of a conversation.
Is it possible to know if someone other than he purchased that, that land? You said that was not purchased.
Oh, oh, I can, I can see, uh, going, I know the land was even for sale, and I know, uh, Dion Louie died, uh, I know a family was settling in the estate, my wife got a call, they, they were asking about what parcels could be deemed separate, what they were, or thinking bunch of them, or something, there's a Hannah, Howard Hannah sign, out of sale, that's, that's the only thing I know why, is even, even for sale, I don't know which, they might be 15 parcels, they might be selling five, I don't know, they, they have a contract, but they ain't got a contract, so I.
Did you say they don't have to?
No, they, they sell their own land to a private individual.
Yeah, but I thought that you, intimated that you knew maybe who was selling, who, who was buying.
Well, no, I haven't heard, but I just know that they're put out of sale.
So, so I just want to say one more thing, and then I would hope that you would, I don't really understand what is happening with the, with the hazardous, but I, I hope that you give some examples of what is hazardous, even if you need to take another month to decide what those things are, because, or you would say, it shouldn't be in a hamlet, or near a hamlet, it shouldn't be near a church. That's the one thing that really amazes me, that you could think of putting it near that beautiful antique church that should be on the historic preservation.
I just wanted to clarify something, because you folks asked me to, to do something at the last meeting, and I don't want you to think that I didn't do my homework, and that was, in, in view of the importance of my motion, that maybe it was a good idea to have vetted with Dave DiMario and Filipe Ultimara, and I thought about that, and I consulted someone outside of the town, who's got over 30 years of legal experience. Normally, that's not done, I mean, I've never been asked, I mean, in my 20s on the planning board, to, to vet something. That doesn't mean you can't ask somebody to do it. In this particular case, though, it would have put Dave DiMario on the spot, because he represents the town.
Right.
So, he could have had a conflict of interest in saying, uh, that my idea is a good one, or it's baloney, he couldn't really say one way or the other, so that's why you didn't get an email from me with a response, so just so you'll know that I, I thought about your request, and that's what happened.
Excuse me, I, I'd like to add something. Actually, I was at the meeting when this first came up, I remember now, because. Actually, I was at the meeting when this first came up, I remember now because, um, in fact, Dave DiMaggio was also commenting about it. So I, at that time, what I was told, the reason they didn't change the zoning, because whoever was asking or called Tom or whoever, that was the catalyst to get something in place. So that's kind of my understanding, it was no inquiry until that court came.
We had other inquiries, wasn't just cocaine. Uh, we had Dollar General, we had, we had a couple others.
But at the time, at the time, that's all was discussed, that was the catalyst, even start to move on this, that type of.
No, we were, the car already talked and we talked about that because with the add-on of water, we also wanted to control growth of water and have, and hence the smudge growth plant. Because if you don't change anything, it, it can rip your, or you can just waste your area.
It was falling under the guise of industrial, that's why it came up.
If we go back to the history, this, I don't really have to hold on to anything, but initially, the proposal was to, to have a project on the west side of Route sixty-three where I own a small piece of property. So for me to vote on it would have been a conflict of interest. You, Tom, suggested that I get an opinion from, uh, Dave DiMaggio about that. And he said it would be better to, that I not vote on anything like that because I had, it's now, it's now a moot point because the proposal has moved across the road where I don't own any.
Well, you know, the proposal hasn't moved across the road, no.
What's that?
Proposal hasn't moved across the road.
Well.
It, it, there is, no, there is no proposal. There is no proposal.
Well, sure there is.
No, they're right.
Wow.
They're, they're right. There is, has anybody heard of the application?
We're talking semantics.
If anybody had a conversation with me in almost a year, no. So how do you follow?
They have all these maps, what do you call it?
Why would you change?
Like, like I just said, that was the catalyst to change, I mean, something has started.
And so what the dollars.
At the time, somebody said, here, nothing is a place to deal with it, so that's why we're in the zoning.
Clarify that, there were multiple steps in what's gotten us to this discussion.
One was this county agreeing to supply, uh, four million dollars into the water. If you want to buy that, that could have been a catalyst. That was what my catalyst to it was, is because you want to control your water, the people were, people were building, not building smart growth. And remember, we had to get into smart growth to be even qualified for water. And that, and that was my catalyst for, for bringing up any areas, but we just didn't want to see the water and the development be a hell of a skeletal waste of thing. Kyle's saying was, because he didn't kind of contact with us.
I think right now, what I'm seeing, you're, you're, you're kind of doing a circle dance around what the stipulation is for the size of the capacity. You can, you can set that down if you're going to change it. Just like the wind turbines and the meteors, we decided for what the height was, so. Is that, am I wrong in that thinking or?
We want to do things right, so we want to encompass, and we don't want to just go after the one.
What did you say, two thousand gallons? Or did you say a thousand?
Either way, we want to encompass more of the, more than just this one, uh, target. So we want what's best for the town. We get differences of opinion on the board.
That's why I brought up the sour thing back then, and then Dave DiMaggio, Washington, said that's way down the road, but we're discussing it.
Well.
We were discussing creating commercial and industrial.
Creating a spot where we'd like, some would like to see some growth happen, not necessarily that, but, uh, a place to get a cup of coffee, a place to get some milk. So now we have a tentative, commercial type of area.
But we're also, also we're looking at the codes that are in place and realizing there are different levels. Um, to change the, the subject line from propane to, we'll call it nuclear. You can have low level radiation in, I don't know that it's in a pacemaker, but all the newer equipment, health equipment. So that's a different level of hazard than having a truck just up nuclear way, still.
Your shoulder panel's falling, that, that guy.
Good to see, maybe it's in the sign.
But as a board, we're seeing that we don't have control over either one of those. So now we want to fold that in because we're looking at this thing holistically, the whole zoning code, saying, wow, a lot of things have changed. In fact, tonight, we even brought another one that I was about to throw into the mix that I'd like to fold into this discussion is the sign discussion. Cause our sign laws are set up for an older version of sign. Now we have a lot of new technology. We probably should be considering our signs as well as, do we want to make some changes to that? While we've got this thing open and we're tinkering with things, let's get everything that we're thinking of encompassed, the solar. There was the discussion of the, uh, Virgin Solar Farm that came up a few months ago. At that point, we're looking at the code saying, you know, we don't have anything to control those larger solar things. We, we probably, while we're in here tinkering, we should be getting that language together too. So again, it's just.
So basically, you and I haven't made any decisions on, on the fire capacity until they formally come to you, don't you think?
We want to have the mechanisms.
Probing whatever it is, you wait till they approach.
We want to have the mechanisms in place that, to be able to step up and say, yeah, no, this doesn't work with what we're trying to do. And we want to be able to go back and we don't want to have to go back and rewrite all of the language, all the things that are out there for, tools for us to use. Tom and I are both very well versed in the state building code, both code officials. We know we have a tool there right now in the state building code that takes care of, there's five different classes of hazards. And it does it by scale of that hazard. So we're gonna, something comes in front of us, we're going to look at that hazard level. The worse that hazard level gets, the board is going to back away further and further from things as that scale of hazard increases. So go from the little shop that makes pacemakers that perhaps has a little bit of nuclear or radioactive material. Um, I know there was a testing company in the place I used to live. They had a small level of radiation or radioactive material on site to test their testers. And it was minute. Do we, I'm not saying tonight that we'd accept that, but I'm sure we'd be more willing to look at that than somebody that came in and is going to put in a small nuclear power plant. Again, just setting scale, not that these things are out there happening. It goes for everything from something that's flammable, something that's, uh, explosive. Right on down the line, we look at that as scale and we look at it as project by project. Otherwise, you're making up your mind before they even walk in.
To me, it's, the reason I even came to the night, I could live in the area forever, so. But formal material, I use, but my mind, preservation of the rural atmosphere. I was at the meeting with Filipe from the county was here, trying to push, putting Dollar General, whatever is here. And his selling point was, basically told me, I'm old generation, I'm the young generation, I don't want to walk out my front door and walk in the store. And I said, well, I'd rather drive to Batavia if I have to go. So it's a difference of opinion, I'd agree with you though. I like the rural character, that's where I'm coming from. I love my, my valley over here and lived in the Creek Valley and the surrounding area. So I'm just looking at preservation, it's pretty cut and dry. We know what can be devastated, what's minimal. I have no problem if they put Country Max sized filling tanks, but you're talking about major distribution centers, I'm not considered. So in my mind, it's cut and dry. If it has this capacity, do you want it here? You should be able to figure that out now rather than wait till they formally approve, then you have everything in order, you know?
A major distribution center was not ever meant to be by the configure, by the total pay.
From what this lady's saying, uh.
That's what it's got. I also got a Chevy, a Dodge and a Toyota to drive. Just that I got one of them, that doesn't mean what they're. Now, how do you know he wasn't just going to have a place where you put trucks and do it? Uh, Barrow County, where they do Blue Runners.
Because he can do that anywhere without changing.
And he was looking at logistically, maybe from the center of the place. I've got a friend that owns several buildings a lot. Now he put the steel one in the center of the hub because he delivers to all. So he could be going to this.
That has nothing to do with.
See, nobody knows what the thing is. Nobody.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I was not told.
I have been to his other facilities.
You've been to his other ones, man, his other plant. He did not say, I am building the same plant that this plant's got, so.
Well, none of them are alike.
Well, we have no idea what his was.
I do have an idea.
Well, you have, you believe you have an idea what his was. How do you know what he was going to build then?
I do not know.
Well, you don't know. This is ridiculous, speaking of words to that.
But to me, it's very simple, Tom, you, you know what you would like to have in your town and there's.
I'd like to have a Dollar General.
Okay.
Okay, I wouldn't mind having a propane distribution plate to you.
Okay. Well, we'll agree to disagree, everyone.
All right.
Then we can walk out.
But you, but you're part of this town board, you should be able to sit down.
No, I can.
No, we're part of the town board, which is kind of interesting how we're.
Is he's part, whether it's zoning or planning board, he's part of our town board.
Is he a board official? Is he on our request to advise us on tonight's sign?
Yeah, but he is, he is part of this community too.
Yeah.
And for him to get angry, why would you get angry?
Yeah, that just, he's decided that he's had enough for this evening, let the gentleman go.
Uh, we are the board, we will, we run the meetings, not every meeting gets a hearing, so we, we do just fine. But again, that's how we're going to approach this. Again, know that should anybody approach us on any of these topics, we will certainly go towards the moratorium because we want control as a board, we don't want to micromanage, but we also want to be able to say no. And as we currently have it, there are elements where we don't have the ability to say no.
That's the problem.
And so we want to be able to put that in.
Do you understand my concern right now? Cause by doing that, it makes me believe there's a.
No.
Not here, there is.
No.
No, no.
One of you, personally.
Listen from this point of view, we have done this month, after 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 month. And I'm not. It's getting old.
So what you're saying, you've done this month after month?
We do a little bit here and a little bit there, and we can never get to the finishing point because we get back to the same discussion. We have never been able to.
Yeah, but like I said, this is what you're giving us.
No, you're asking for us.
I don't give issues and you've given it.
You are asking for us to come right out tonight and say, no, we're not going to do something.
But let me just say here, I would say for us.
Go ahead, I was asking.
For us here.
Maybe.
No. If you're.
Limits.
But what I'm asking, can you make a, can you make a decision before your approach, do already have in, in, if you're coming?
There is, there's that one thing here that I totally disagree with anybody tonight. But the only thing that I'll put out here for you is that we've covered a lot of subject matter here. You're covering a lot of subject matter, okay? Can you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, well, we can't sit here today in this next month and try to, to put caps and limits on all this subject matter and get it through the law process and into this book. We can't do it, we'll be here for years. If we don't have something in front of us that's causing the debate, we'll never get through it. We'll never get through it all. We, it has to come before us, we have to see what they're proposing. Then we see, okay, one other problem, then we get involved.
And I appreciate you saying that because I need reassurance because, like I said, I was part of, I was part of that whole approach with the time. There was so much under the table, underhand stuff.
Not at this table.
That's what I'm here for, because I want to be reassured if you.
No, and there's difference of opinions at this table, so nobody's going to run stand by anything. And I'm just going to tell you, it's hard, I'm concerned.
I'm walking out as I'm talking.
The rest of us, we're not putting no nuclear plant down where you live. I'm just sorry, we're going to stand up and make a great big sense of fuss all over town. It isn't a nuclear plant.
That project still, it has only been ever brought up as a topic for discussion, there's been no.
All those maps, all the changing of, of.
Now that had, that was completely different than that propane.
My lot, which was.
That should have been done years ago.
Yes.
We just finished a process that got started many years ago and never got finished. We just updated the map to go with our comprehensive plan.
It just happened to go inside.
Everything was, it just happened to be a thing that got, I don't want to say put to the side, but it's just something that the water brought it up and we had to finish the project that got started years ago.
Actually, it's for your benefit, for all our benefits, because like he said, there's too many holes in here and lots of things could happen. And we're like, oh my God, so we're not standing in the, oh my gosh, what are we going to do nowadays? We are like trying to, he's doing a wonderful job of trying to write this down and make the whole.
I'm not doing a lot.
I know, what I'm saying is really, it, it's bigger than us, and I know that sounds ridiculous, but.
Well, it just takes a lot of hard work.
Exactly, and she's right, and we have talked this to death. And like I said, we've had meetings that gone on longer, I've, I don't have a long bet on here, but sometimes we had meetings that were ten minutes long. You know, like staying with her until now or nine o'clock, going over all these little details so that we don't get caught in a position where we have no recourse, but to let something horrible kind of go through. I mean, a nice simplistic way of talking. Please, nothing on this table, or I would say anybody, because we're your name, we're all together in this. I don't want something crappy in my town either, you know? We don't, and we have no, there's nothing, any was, can we agree that we would get out of it? You know, we're not.
How the Jew would get something.
No, but I'm just saying, it wouldn't even.
But we're all here to do this and there's nights where, Ray, it's not picnic time, but Ray will bring something up and the back of my mind immediately goes, well, that's a little ridiculous there, Ray. But I don't say it because I want to hear him out, because then I get the nuance of what is Ray really saying. And it took us three, four months to get to that point. Now I understand what we're going for. It's going to have confidence in us to sweep it together and go back and, Ray, is this what we were doing? And it's not, he's the only voice here, everyone here is going to have same input. We're here, we want the input. We also don't want to necessarily, and I'm, I don't want to shut you down, but I also don't want to every time go back, the minute that propane thing comes here, we're going to probably go to the red if it ever did.
Ray, I just wish that guy never showed up because he's speaking a lot of trouble there.
Ever came in front of us, I'd look to Ray and say, Ray, you got some shit?
Go to Ray.
We don't want to leave, everybody here in the town has voice and all of you that have been here regular also need to know, if I'm sitting here and something like that's going on, I'm wondering, she must not know about it. Let's table this, Ray, find her, make sure she comes to the next meeting. Because we want all the voices heard. It doesn't mean it goes your way, it doesn't go my way, it doesn't go somebody else's way. We want all the voices, we will sift them out, we will.
It isn't just the owner of this property, it's all of the citizens. You're working for, and you're voluntary, working for all, voluntarily, working for all of the people in this town. You represent their best hopes.
And again, that's why we look for the input. Also, moving forward, I'd like to lessen the discussion of propane. If it comes in front of us, then absolutely.
Please, please.
Please scream.
No, for our propane. For at least two weeks.
You made a crucial point, Tom, because the scale means everything. Uh, radium dial watch, watches it glow, it's radium. It's not very much, although you wouldn't want to eat it. Uh, pacemakers, right, so.
My rays march out of the town.
Now, getting back to the propane thing, okay, so is there a difference between five hundred gallons of propane and five hundred thousand gallons of gas? There's a difference. And until, like Tim said, until we get it in front of us, we can't evaluate it.
But you can know by someone actually doing some homework that the usual thing that this person does, not that he said he was never going to do it. I doubt that he said he was going to do it either. I, he was simply looking for a place.
But again.
But we see, I have seen with my husband, what he has done in other places.
And it very well could have been what plan he was thinking at the time he was thinking. But till it sits here on the hard disk, it, it can't tell. And we want to be able to allow some things, but also be consider of the magnitude and scale to stick with what we do here as a town. That's back to the radioactive testing equipment. You know, I've got this small little radioactive bump in my hand that, okay, it's low hazard versus, okay, this big giant.
I do have a finger collar if you want to borrow it, Tom.
See? We'll, we'll test that.
If that shows up at a meeting, oh my gosh.
So on that, let's see, but anyone else got anything to add to what we want to do with the zoning code? Right now, we're looking at solar farm definitions and some language. The, we'll call it the high hazard, but it encompasses more than just high hazard. Um, because like you say, radioactive is probably not going to fit in that realm, but we will. Um, because like you say, radioactive is probably not going to fit in that realm, but we will fold it in. And then the other one is signage. And that's more to get up to speed with current technology.
Did you know that the town has gathered a law prohibiting solar?
Yes, we do, and I have not yet looked at it, but as we get into this, Felipe made us aware of it. We will study it, I don't want to say there ever has it. I'm not saying we're going that way, but I want to understand what they're doing, why they're doing.
They also have an 800 page report that was done over a two-year period.
But again, the reason why, just, we're taking our time working through it. If somebody showed up tomorrow, we'd be immediately considering a moratorium. Whether it happened or not, it's amongst this board, it's not just me, but I would certainly make the motion that we'd be, should we be doing it to have better control over the top, so.